Are we okay? Ooh.
Somebody has a speaker on, maybe your laptop.
Okay.
Let's see. Go on, Max. It's time. Try now.
Good evening. We're good?
It's still echoing.
Yeah.
Nothing, not more.
It's her speaker out there. This is the Planning Board Hybrid Meeting. February 10th, 2025, 5:00 PM. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing. These scheduled for on-demand viewing for any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone is recording the meeting, please notify the chairman. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31st, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 890-490-454, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, formerly Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. I'd like to begin with the road call vote. Catherine Hepburn.
Present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Werschafter.
Bob Werschafter, present.
Charlene Greenhall.
Present.
Frank Shear.
Present.
Bob Dubas.
Bob Dubas, present.
And Art Spruon, present. I'd like to begin with the minutes for January 27th, 2025. Are there any comments on this? I do have one on the last page underneath the public comment. It referred to a next meeting, which was February 2nd. That should be February 3rd. That was the meeting that we had. It was just a date added there. I didn't have any other comments. Charlene?
With that amendment?
Warren, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have one suggested change. Page two, second of the last paragraph, where it quotes me as saying there should be no living space on the third floor. That's not exactly what I said. I would prefer if it said there should be limited living space on the third floor.
Okay. Any other comments? Charlene?
With those amendments, I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of January 27th, 2025.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
We'll do a road call vote. Catherine Hepburn.
I approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werschafter.
Bob Werschafter, staying.
Thank you. Charlene Greenhall.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
Approve.
Bob Dubas.
Bob Dubas, approve.
And Art Spruon, I approve. All right. The next meeting on the agenda is the long-range planning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. I just want to make the board aware that we just received the comments from the Town Council late this morning. I didn't have a chance to go over it with Christine until mid-afternoon. The reason why you're just getting it now is it took us a while just to flush through everything that the Town Council had. I do apologize for that, but we did the best we could based on when we were able to get the feedback from Town Council. It was a fairly good turnaround by the Town Council, so I'm not trying to put any burden on that side of it. It's just there's a lot that we've been going through on adjustments. It's, I think Gloria, we wanted to go, she's here just for a brief period of time. We wanted to go through some of her comments and her responses to Town Council's comments, and we might start with that first, and then we'll go back to the beginning of the document.
Thanks, I appreciate that. So, having reviewed Town Council's comments, having a couple of my own, and also going through the document looking for internal consistency, I have made and am recommending a couple of changes. They're already done on your documents, but I want to specifically point out the areas of concern from a housing perspective. So if you go to page three, definitions, the definition for affordable housing was, did you see that last time, or is this brand new, the affordable housing?
I'm not sure it was included last time.
So, okay. I mean, I've done a lot of versions of this already. So there's two, I think, new definitions, affordable housing and attainable housing, and actually also inclusionary housing. So I'm going to go through them. Affordable housing, a dwelling unit deed restricted in perpetuity for sale or rental for a price or rent that is deemed affordable to a household earning no more than 80% of the area median income for Barnstable County, as adjusted for household size. An affordable housing unit created as part of this inclusionary housing requirement of this bylaw must be a principal residence and occupied year-round, and that's further defined as 10 months out of a 12-month period. And this matches state and federal definitions of affordable housing, which is 80% AMI and below. And Town Council reviewed that language and was fine with it. Attainable housing, dwelling unit deed restricted, sale or rental for a price or rent that is deemed affordable for a household earning above 80% and up to 125% of area median income, same as above. An attainable housing unit created as part of this inclusionary housing requirement of this bylaw must be a principal residence and occupied year-round, 10 months out of a 12-month period. And so attainable is defined here, above 80 and up to 125. In the future, if you guys ever want to come back, like if in four more years we do another housing needs assessment and the attainable need is shown to go up to like 175%, you can go back and edit that. But right now, the discussion with the board has always been up to 125%. And then I added a very general definition of inclusionary housing for the purposes of this bylaw means requiring a certain percentage of housing units within new residential developments, subdivisions, conversions, adaptive reuse projects, and expansions of existing structures where new dwelling units are created to be deed restricted and set aside as affordable to households' earning between, oh, that's got to be amended. Did I already amend that? Actually, I think I have an early, does it say up to 80%?
No, earnings up to 125%.
Okay, right, so, because that, thank you, I just have my old notes. Up to 125%. So that covers the whole range of affordable up to 125% and/or a payment in lieu or required fractionally units. So I think, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Does anyone have any questions about that?
Okay, and Town Council signed off on all three, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Catherine.
In my humble opinion, I think it sounds good, and I think it's more clear than what we had before, so thank you for that.
I tried to clarify and also make concise some sections, and you'll see on the next page. So if you go to page four, you'll notice that the definition for qualified household struck completely. If you go to page five, definitions for year-round ownership units and year-round rental units, also stricken completely. And the reason for that is that we're not doing year-round units, right? And when you read the definition of qualified household, it's really only talking about those year-round units. And when I did a search of the documents of qualified household and year-round units, the only place it came up were in those three definitions. So they made their own little, like, self-defined group of things that aren't even covered in the bylaw anymore, so those are out. So now the most, I'm, no questions on that, right? Okay. So the most significant change that I'm proposing, and you might recognize this from an earlier draft, and it doesn't exactly correspond to Town Council's comments, although he's kind of like nipping around the edges of this. I don't know if you guys remember, but like the first draft of inclusionary, when you talked about the distribution of affordability, we had the first unit had to be 80% AMI or below, it was an affordable unit, and eligible for inclusion on the subsidized housing inventory. And then over the last, like, couple of years, there's been so much talk about, like, well, the need for attainable housing, and we've kind of gotten away from that original affordable housing. And then another draft said the first unit had to be 90%, and then the second unit 100%. And then you'll notice that at some point I slipped in, well, the first unit should be 80% to 90%. And I'm going to go out on a limb and make the case for going back to the original, which is the first unit is affordable to households earning, I can't remember though, I said up to 80% or 80% AMI and below, and eligible for inclusion on the subsidized housing inventory.
Could you remind us where you're reading from?
This is section nine, the first bullet point under it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, so page seven.
Page seven.
Page seven, okay.
This section was always there, but this is a, an adjustment in the language that Gloria is suggesting that we do.
And I, I have a rationale for this, too. And Jay, this is what I said, that Jay, Town Council was kind of nipping at the edges of this. So we're calling this an inclusionary bylaw, but when you don't have a requirement for affordable housing, I think that it's pretty tenuous to call it inclusionary, right? And if you are asking, like, the last draft before this change, if you're asking for the first unit to be between 80% and 90% AMI, a developer is always going to pick, like, the highest limit that you let them, because it requires less subsidy, there's less of an affordability gap. And so I think it's very unlikely that we would end up with an 80% unit, and I think that that's an inherent weakness from a, an Attorney General, the Attorney General's Office perspective. If we're doing an inclusionary bylaw, but we're not actually including any units that are at 80% AMI and below for low and moderate income housing. Because when you think about all of the inclusionary language in Mass General laws, it really does refer to low and moderate income housing, and then state and federal definitions of low and moderate income housing is housing affordable to households earning 80% AMI and below. So I just want to, I want to make this bulletproof, because we're doing a lot of really innovative things, like a fairly high base requirement of 20%, allowing people to go up to 25% with a density bonus for inclusionary units. And I would hate for this to get kicked back on a technicality like that. And the fact of the matter is, from a housing needs perspective, and our housing needs assessment did show this, that really the greatest need is at that 80% AMI and below. So I think that we're hitting the purpose of providing housing that meets the needs of the community. I think we're hitting the requirement of making this like a true inclusionary bylaw by having the first unit in any, and the first and only one, really. Like, it's, we're only requiring one affordable. Everything else can be attainable after that in the development, but just making sure that we hit that point. So, any thoughts on that?
Just curious why you said Town Council nipped around the edges of it?
Some of his, some of his.
If that's not too blunt.
So if you look at comments, JT44R43, he goes, but none of the units described in the bullet points are restricted at 80% or below, and as a consequence, perpetual affordability inclusion on the SHI may not happen. So we talk about that. We talk about in definitions and elsewhere, like that permanent deed restriction, we talk about inclusion on the SHI, but in actuality, we haven't done anything that really would actually produce those units, unless you specifically come out and say that first unit has to be 80% AMI and below.
Frank?
Well, I'm persuaded I agree with you, so.
So, Charlene?
I'm actually pleased with this change. The only thing is, under the definition of affordable housing, it says no more than 80%, and you're then saying earning up to 80%. I don't know if we need to be consistent in the language.
Consistent, yeah.
Or even, or even make it shorter and just say the first housing unit shall be affordable, period, as defined herein.
As opposed to?
Because we already say it in the definition, so I don't know if we need to say it again in that first bullet point.
So I would say it in the bullet point, only because it's, not that you can't refer back, but it really does kind of lay out our distribution really clearly. So the first one's 80% and below, the second one's 90 to 100, and then the third one can be whatever they want.
Right. I'm just wondering if we want to be consistent, because in the definition, it says no more than 80%, and then you're saying up to. Either way works, but.
And I think in one other place, it says 80% and below, or something like that, so it's all over the place.
You know, but let's use the same language.
I agree. We'll do that. Bob, you had?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering why it's 90 to 100, to, why not 81 to 100, or even less than 100? If somebody wants to put a second under 80 or below, why would we say no to that? So I think we really are only setting the upper limits of these.
So that, so this was a discussion we had a while ago, and the reason this was set up like this was because you guys wanted to guarantee, like, a range of incomes. So that's why, so the first one was like that 80, and when, when you say 90 to 100% AMI, when you qualify for 90%, what that really means is that you're earning between, like, 81% and 90%. Like, that, there's a range for qualification, and if you're at 100% AMI, you would really be 91 to 100%. But the reason this was put out this way was so that you guys would get a range of different things.
We're still going to get the range, because as you pointed out, every builder's going to build at 100%. So why have a lower limit?
I think it's just the way it was drafted.
I understand.
This one goes, this one goes back.
I'm trying to make things a little simpler. The second one has to be under, up to 100%, and the third one can be up to 125.
So, so take the lower limit out and just say up to, yeah.
So you're suggesting just revise it to up to?
Up to, yeah. Take out the lower limit. Did that work for you, Gloria?
Yeah, it does.
Thank you.
I'm flexible on literally everything, now that you've agreed to that whole 80% AMI and below, so take advantage of my goodwill at this point. All right, so we have up to 80%, up to 100%, and then up to 125. Okay. There is a slight adjustment made to the second bullet point about affordable units deed restricted at 80% AMI or below shall be affordable in perpetuity. Attainable units deed restricted above 80% AMI shall be affordable in perpetuity or for the longest time allowed by law.
So what happened with all this and what triggered it? Was the definition where we used the term in perpetuity, and Town Council said that, and that was with the definition on attainable, and that's where he questioned that. He said it is allowed and affordable, but not necessarily inattainable. So that's why we came up with this revised language. It's just from the last discussion we had.
Yeah, I have a trouble, I have trouble with the word shall be affordable when it's attainable. I mean, it's just.
Well, shall be affordable to households earning.
Yeah, can we?
I'm, I mean, that, so that's, that's just clear English.
It is, but it is, we've defined affordable somewhere else. It's not capital A, but it.
Right, but this, so this is a verb, and it's not an adjective modifying the noun housing.
I understand that I've read it 10 times. I just, okay.
Frank?
So Gloria, has Council given us any hint as to what is the period that we can restrict attainable?
No, no.
But we're going to have to figure this out soon.
No, we don't, I mean.
Well, don't we have to put the restriction on the deeds?
I mean, honestly, the laws can change. It may depend on other things. I've seen LDA's land disposition agreements for affordable housing development that is leased rather than sold, and for instance, it's a 99-year lease, and the language in the LDA about affordable says in perpetuity or as long as allowed by law, but no less than 99 years, which is the term of the lease. So I imagine that no, no less than what's allowed by law may shift depending on the circumstance.
Yeah, I'm aware of the lease situation. I was wondering in an ownership situation, what do, do we have any sense of what it's going to be? I mean, because we have to draft the restriction, right?
Well, Town Council will draft the restriction.
Yes, exactly.
You guys aren't drafting.
And I think case law is going to dictate.
We have to, we have to approve it.
Right. I, so I can't, I can't put a number on it right now. I don't know, maybe Mike has some.
Okay.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Never mind. So for attainable units, we say must be deed restricted in perpetuity or the longest term allowed under the law. I mean, in the past, it was 40 years, you know, so.
Yep, you got to go to a microphone.
He said there are some places out in Western Mass where it goes up to 50. I think it's going to depend on the circumstance and, you know, whether it's leased, whether, who knows? Who knows?
Catherine?
I'll just say, when they break ground on the first development, that's when we have to really start worrying about defining that. Or, I mean, we can do it in advance, but.
So I, so I imagine that over the years, this may change based on case law. So we might, we might determine what our deed restriction is going to be for the attainable units on Main Street, and then in five years, courts might determine that it's actually, you know, five years longer than we had it, or five years shorter, so that's why you have that kind of language.
I guess my concern is that if that period is too short, I'm not sure why we're doing this at all, if it's 30 years or something like that. So I'll let that set.
So right now, I know that certain restrictions can be put in place for 30 or 40 years, like homeowners association rules and stuff like that, it's 30 years. For different levels of affordability, it's been 40 years. So we're, we're in that ballpark.
Right, and so we have units in Chatham that are currently at that point, they're expiring, and I believe we're in the position of trying to extend them, acquire them. So is that where we're going to be, do you think, in this situation? Yeah, okay. I just want to understand.
Sorry, I don't have a more definitive answer. The last, the last change that I edited in response to Town Council's comment is on the very last page, page 17, that old RPZ footnote, which I haven't looked at in a couple of years. Town Council had a question about whether you could limit the expansion allowed of a single-family house. So footnote, footnote one, but subsection four below it, used to say any addition to a single-family home located within or partially within the RPZ, which was in existence as of the date of the adoption of this bylaw, may be allowed up to an additional 50% of building square footage. The idea being that you don't want to expand it too much, have more people living in there, and Town Council said, no, we're not doing that. So.
Not, not for pre-existing non-conforming units.
Exactly.
That doesn't fall underneath our purview, is what he's saying.
And they, and they have rights under Chapter 48, Section 6. So we're not, this over here is not going to supersede Mass General laws. So that section was stricken, but we left in no new dwelling units shall be allowed in the RPZ, which was kind of the gist of what people wanted, to, to be respectful of the, I guess, the wishes of the Airport Commission relative to the RPZ.
Well, this was something that, once the Town Council made an issue of this, I read the, I was initially thinking that we just strike the whole note, but then I read that this is the note with the second part of it that said, well, we don't want any new residential units within the RPZ of the West Chatham Neighborhood District to try to. to try to support the direction that the airport was trying to, to go with. They, they were agreeing with us that if there's a redevelopment and all of that, that a redevelopment could occur and we've, if we keep status quo on everything. But they were trying to manage any kind of residential, new residential within the RPZ. And if you take a look at the area where this is, there's, there's only about one property that is impacted by this. Go, go ahead Catherine.
Yes, we probably heard from that property owner in a number of meetings. So I'm not sure I quite understand this. Does this mean that there's no restriction on their expansion? Yeah, in the RPZ? If they're pre-existing non-conforming. So in other words, it's less of a restriction than what we had.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's no restriction as opposed to.
On an existing residence, yeah. So, okay.
Gloria questioned, ADRs are now permitted by right, correct, in many places? Does that mean you can build a, an ADR out back in the middle of the RPZ?
So, so my read of this language in, in plain English is that no new dwelling units are allowed and an ADU would be a new dwelling unit. Because you would have a single family home and then all of a sudden you would have a second residence on it.
I agree with that, but that doesn't mean much really. Glad you said it.
Okay.
I was just going to reiterate that the new law that came through, you can only have an ADU if single family residences are allowed in that zoning district.
That's right.
You can with.
Right.
Well, that, that'll be an interesting question because, so single family homes, are they, are they allowed? No, no more, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, yeah. And that was, that was the extent of what I had to say. If there are any questions lingering after that discussion, I'm happy to talk it.
So the other section that was modified and we did review was section seven, but there weren't any edits done to section seven. That's the other housing related component.
Okay, so no edits?
No edits, no, no edits from the last meeting that we had. That's all from what, from what we reviewed previously.
Well, Gloria, I apologize for not having had a chance to thoroughly digest the latest draft. But could you refresh my recollection of the scan I did of this as to where and how we are now requiring year, year-round occupancy, i.e. ten months of the year, for, for market-based units?
So we are not requiring any year-round units, just year-round. We're requiring deed restricted units based on that distribution of affordability. So eighty percent, a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty-five percent. And with those deed restricted units, they will be year-round. That's part of the definition.
No, I understand that, but that's likely to be, you know, twenty-five percent of the units, no more than that. The other seventy-five percent are market-based units. And those are the ones that we definitely want to restrict to year-round occupancy.
So I know that there has been discussion about banning short-term rentals in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning district. I have not worked on a section for that, so I don't know where that stands. I think that either Christine or Katie would be able to answer that.
Please go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment that my memory is that the board agreed that we would like to apply the same restriction to all units in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. In other words, that market rate as well be occupied year-round with ten months in residence and two months available. I think we, we agreed on that last meeting or the meeting before.
Then I think, I think what you're referring to then is the year-round rental, year-round ownership units, that might come back into the picture then. The definition that was previously stated in there, because I think that's where it was covered.
It would be rental units as well as owners.
Well, and again, that was probably the reason for the definition that was, that was there below it. Those two had that component of no short-term rentals in it.
So at this, at this time with seasonal, so seasonal communities passed, you know, as part of the Affordable Homes Act. And Chatham is designated a seasonal community because thirty-five plus percent of our housing stock is short-term rentals or seasonal homes. However, we've not gotten guidance yet from the state whether we have to accept that designation through the legislative body, which is town meeting, or deny it, or whether it's automatic. So until we know that it's automatic or until we know that we've accepted it, there's no mechanism for us to put a year-round restriction on a unit at this point. So once seasonal communities gets fleshed out a little bit more, I'm thinking that maybe next year, we can go back and start thinking about amending this in that way. But we, we don't have the ability to do like a year-round restriction.
But, but we can limit short-term rentals.
You can.
Right.
You can ban them, but that doesn't mean that someone's going to live there.
No, correct.
Year-round, it just means that they have to rent in blocks of more than thirty-one days.
I'll take half the apple if, if I can. So I think we need to have a very simple statement that a, if, a, a owner occupied, a resident can rent up to sixty days in a calendar year. But the leases have to be no less than thirty days long, something like that.
But it, but, but it doesn't necessarily require them to live there. Do you know what I mean? Like you're not making them live there, you're just limiting their ability. So it can be empty for eight months, they could be there for two months, and they could rent it for two months.
No.
I know it's not what you want, but it's, it's hard to get what you want. We're, we're working on it. But right now, until we get the, the question of seasonal communities squared away, we can't really, we can't really do that. But you can do something about short-term rentals. You can limit the total number of days it's rented and you can limit the length of time it's rented.
Then let's revisit the definitions then.
I don't think we need to, I think we just say something like that.
Okay.
I think an easy fix would be to put it in the use table.
Oh, exactly.
Not permitted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that.
So it goes, but it goes longer than that because if you want to limit, if you want to limit the length, the length of time, you can, you can ban them. And that would limit it to thirty-two days or more. But if you want to put a maximum number of days that you can.
We do.
You're going to have to have maybe a footnote under the use table.
Right, right.
Okay.
So you, so you could rent up to sixty days, but the lease has to be at least thirty days long.
Right, so I would just say no short-term rentals allowed. Rental of units up to a total of sixty days.
What is a short-term rental? What, what was the definition?
Less than thirty.
Less, less than thirty-one days.
Okay, so we don't need that definition, we're simply, okay, good.
Is that definition in the zoning bylaw or is that in the general bylaws?
It's in the, oh, actually, it's at the state level. So we probably should, we probably should define it. So, okay, let's do a definition of short-term rentals in the definitions section.
Why can't we just say you can't rent for less than thirty days?
Well, I, why can't we restrict rentals to no more than sixty days a year?
And that too, right.
That, that applies to every dwelling unit in the West Chatham.
Every dwelling unit in the.
Which my failing memory was what was a requirement from the prior town council. As long as you applied it to everybody.
I agree.
Then it was defensible.
Right, so we simply say that you can rent up to sixty days in a calendar year, but no leases for less than thirty days.
So, um.
That's all you need.
So work out some language. I think that you can actually, so you should put it in the use table. Like short-term rentals not allowed, X, X, X. And then in the definitions, I think we can say something like, short-term rentals for the purposes of this bylaw in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning are, are not allowed and restricted to, and rentals restricted to sixty days maximum in any calendar year or something like that.
Well, you can do that Gloria, but I think you just need a simple sentence like I threw out. Okay.
But I think we can put it in the, I think we can take care of it in the definitions.
I, I just have a concern that, you know, Charlene Greenhilde buys a market rate unit.
Yep.
I live elsewhere, I buy a market rate unit that I'm going to retire to, you know, in a certain number of years, and I want to rent that out year-round to somebody.
You can rent it year-round.
So that wouldn't, but we're saying no more than sixty days.
No, 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 no.
No, no.
But we can, I think we can have year-round rentals, you can have a year-long lease.
As long as that's under.
As well as.
I agree with you on that one Charlie.
I don't want to, you know.
So can I make one other suggestion too? If it, if it's thirty, if thirty-one days is the required lease, then it, more than thirty, so it has to be thirty-one. Then, then you ought to be able to rent the place out for sixty-two days. Otherwise, you only get one rental.
But I was going with thirty days.
That's actually a very good point. I think we started maybe at sixty-five at one point.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please Catherine.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments if I might. One is, I'm not necessarily objecting to our one thirty-one day leases, but just to point that part of our rationale in providing this was for year-round residents who wanted to rent out either their owned or rented unit for a couple of months in the summer to augment their income. And most people who do that rent it out by the night or possibly the week because the amount of money that you can make is, you know, maybe like twenty times. So, so if we're, if that is our rationale is to help people who are living there full-time year-round augment their income, I, I just think we need to consider that fact. The other point I do want to point out to the board.
Is it okay if, so short-term rentals would be allowed, but only for a maximum of sixty-five days in a calendar year or sixty days or something?
If that's what the board agrees with, yeah.
It's not saying that short-term rentals are banned, it's just saying you can short-term rent, but you can't short-term rent for more than sixty or sixty-two or sixty-five days.
But I do think we wanted that in terms of an occupied unit. We didn't want it in terms of this situation where, you know, someone isn't occupying their unit yet and they're renting it out for two months a year. I think it was more for, to give a benefit to earn some extra income to those year-round residents, whether renting or owned.
So I, so that, so that's a way of crafting a short-term rental regulation where you can say if you're, you can rent out your primary residence, for instance, but no more than sixty-five days a year. I think that when you start talking about all of these things and pulling this out in West Chatham, I think that it's a larger, I think it's a larger policy question that maybe we should think about for the town. Like why, why would we be doing this in West Chatham and nowhere else? Why is it only in West Chatham that you can only rent your principal residence and you can only rent it for sixty-two days or sixty or sixty-five?
Because we're writing.
Gloria, they. Because we're writing a new bylaw right now. And eventually it could be applied to the rest of the town.
And the answer is there is no shortage of rental properties that can be short-term in town.
Yeah.
There's no shortage at all. What we're trying to is create year-round housing in a higher density, which is the perfect place to have short-term rentals if you can do it. So we need to prohibit it.
I mean, I, I get what you're doing and I'm thinking about the regulations that we have on the books already, which is essentially a registration scheme through the Board of Health. I think there'd have to be another like tier of registration. I think you'd have to like verify your principal residence. I'm just thinking of like all these ramifications. I don't know, Mike, do you have any comments on this? Because this really is like a, this is more of an upper level policy discussion. And I think that because this hasn't, I mean, I, so I can, I can write what you guys want. However, this hasn't really been out there in the public. Like we haven't been talking about this. We don't have like a short-term rental work group that's, that's looking at this type of thing. We haven't heard people go to the select board and say, you know, we need, we need to ban these, we need to figure this out. So I think that, I think that we're getting into an area that is maybe not as well-vetted as some of the like traditional like village zoning stuff that we're talking about.
Well.
Okay.
In all due respect, I think the public has spoken in terms of their initial input that led us to down the path of where we are. As well as the directions from the select board. The, the whole idea is to create neighborhoods for affordable, attainable and lower-priced, more moderately priced, um, market-based units. And the only way to do that, the only way to do it, and it's been supported by the input that I've heard from the public, is to restrict it. I thought the suggestion from Charlene that we provide the opportunity to rent for a couple of months of the year. That was our accommodation to not having a full, you know, complete prohibition. I'm not in favor of allowing you to have short-term rentals of less than a thirty days because it just means that's going the wrong direction. What we're trying to do is encourage people to live there year-round with the ability to rent it out for a couple of months. If they can't rent it for quite as much as they could, if they did it by the day, well.
Gloria, I think we had a.
Then don't have, don't live in West Chatham neighborhood if that's the important thing.
We had a, sorry, I, I wouldn't, I need to support you. That we had a consensus, which Gloria may not have been fully up to date on, that we would not allow short-term rentals with some exceptions. And I, I think for all the reasons Warren has put out, it's terribly important for us to address the issue in the neighborhood. And that doesn't mean that we can't put together a tax, a task force and look at it, you know, town-wide and maybe that results in a change in what we do in the neighborhood. It doesn't preempt anything that we decide to do. That's my view.
So what would you do with the people who already live there, who already rent their units short-term for as long as they want, who have certain protections under the law?
They would be pre-existing.
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
No change.
No change.
That's another reason, there's plenty of short-term rental possibilities within the Neighborhood Center.
This is intended for all the new, this is intended for all the new residential development.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to remind the board, this is from years back when we were first setting up the use table. You will notice in the use table that we permit hotel, motel and lodgings. Again, as I recall, and this was pre-COVID when we were setting up this use table. Again, part of our rationale in allowing, at first we wanted it not permitted, hotel, motel and lodgings. At first we didn't, we, we wanted that not permitted in the district. We decided to allow it, to allow some older couple who, you know, has, owns a unit there, who wants to set up a bed and breakfast in the next-door unit to earn some extra income. Again, our rationale was kind of to provide a business opportunity for a full-time resident there. So, and those are definitely going to be short-term rentals. So it, just to bring it out to the board, if we want to delete that, we did consider that before, just not allowing that use.
Could we, could we clarify that? I mean, a hotel, when I go to a hotel, I'm not renting the room.
No.
I think that's different. I'm, I'm paying, it's not, I don't sign any rental agreement, do I? I'm, I'm asking. I think it's, I think that's.
You could be there for a day or a week, right?
It doesn't seem like it's a rental.
Yeah.
I think that's, you know, a whole different thing. You're not signing a lease when you go to a hotel or an inn.
Well, I, I, I think the, the board members and I, and I agree with you that this is something that the board's direction. I think it's what we're, what we wanted to do. It's, and it's the direction that I think it should be applied to the West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaw. So appreciated if, if any changes that you do support that.
So any developer who builds a new development.
And wants to put in residential.
Yeah. Would not be able to sell the units really at like. Would not be able to sell the units really at, like, the current market rate because that current market rate takes into account the fact that people can buy and, and rent out whenever they want. So there's going to be some sort of restriction on these units because short term rentals are only going to be allowed if it's your principal residence. That's basically what you're saying. You have to live there year round to have the benefit of doing a short term rental for 60 days max.
Are you, are you renting for the 10 year, a 10, 10 month term to someone?
Yeah.
Gloria. Or you just buy the property and not rent it? I mean, it doesn't reduce the.
Right.
It doesn't reduce the value in the long term.
No.
So it, so it definitely, it will definitely devalue the property to a certain amount. I don't know how much that is. I don't know how that would impact, like, a development pro forma. I don't know how it would inhibit development. Maybe that's the goal, I don't know. But I think that when you start talking about that, and I, I appreciate the sentiment, I think that, like, I don't, I don't really know enough about the impacts of that. I can certainly write it in, but if questions come up, like, I'm not going to be able to answer them. Like, if people say, like, oh, what does this do to the value? It's hard, it's really hard to say. Like, I don't know other towns.
But we deal, well, we don't deal with rental or ownership or anything on the property. That's up to whoever develops it. That's been always a clear cut criteria that that's not, not in our purview.
You're limiting them. You're, so, so in a sense, you are dealing with this.
Well.
You're, you're putting restrictions on their ability to do something.
I, I hear what you're saying, Gloria, but our primary motivation is not what you're saying. Our primary motivation is get as much as year round residents in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center because that's what's going to make it lively.
I completely understand that point and I appreciate.
So this is our direction on the way the board wants to go.
Okay, this is, so, and what are, what are we, like, a month and a half from town meeting or something? It's, it's a tight timeframe for this. Well, Christine, what's the, what's the turnaround?
So we do not have.
So we're going to have to vet all this with town council and.
Okay, so what I would say to you is that we received one round of comments from town council at the end of last week after we had talked at, at the previous meeting. Then you received a second round of, of comments from town council today as a result of some of the changes that Gloria made. We are now talking about putting the additional piece of the short term rental. And I know it has been discussed numerous times. But if we want to do that, there are some major changes here that would have to happen. By the end of tonight, we have to make, you have to make a recommendation to the Select Board if you would like this to go forward. Right now, this is on the agenda for February 18th for the, for the Select Board meeting. And then we have to do the public, the legal ads, and then we have to do the public hearing. All of that has to be timed out perfectly so that we can get on the warrant and that you could have town meeting vote on it on Saturday, May 10th. As has been quan all the way through the process since I have been here, there is the issue of the seasonal communities guidance and how we're going to do that, right? So, so that's another piece of it. I don't think that, I'm sure that Gloria is more than capable to give you wording to adjust and do whatever. I, I'm sure that town council can give you some comments back in some way, but we don't know how all of these things are going to be impacted, like we have told you time and time again, by the seasonal communities guidance, so.
Has anyone, has anyone talked to?
I know, but we've decided that we were going to defer anything associated with the seasonal communities piece because we don't know when that's going to come out.
Right, so.
We started, we also decided that we wanted to move ahead with the bylaw. And if there's some changes, then we'll deal with them subsequent to this, all right? So that was, that was a board decision too, that we want to move ahead with this. We also wanted to do exactly what the board members are asking for right now, which is provide for as much as possible year round residents.
So what I would say to you, if you want the piece of short term rental and you want to talk it through with Gloria tonight, we can do that.
So I, just for, for background, so I haven't had anything to do with short term rentals at all. I've been focused on inclusionary and incentive zoning and some definitions. So if there have been discussions between, like, staff and town council about short term rentals, I haven't been involved. So I don't know if you guys have discussed anything.
Any comments that you see in the, in the bylaw, all of the comments we've received today?
The only comment was, like, at one point, I put a comment in and I said, should short term rentals stuff go here? But I don't.
We had restrictions on short term rentals in the bylaw.
It was.
For the entire time that I've been on this board.
That's correct, and it's been struck out now.
Nothing new.
When was it struck out? Like, I don't.
Last week. Your definitions.
Last week.
You did it. You said, I think we should delete this.
Yeah.
And then, and then the council said, well, mostly agreed because he was responding to your, your comment, but that's not what.
Year round rental units? But that's different than short term rentals. That's a, that's a different thing. It's just, they're not comparable. They're two different laws.
If I could make a comment, I just want to, I just want to echo what Frank said.
One at a time, please.
I just want to echo what Frank said. I've been working on this bylaw for almost 10 years and since the beginning, ever since the beginning. It has all, to the best of my memory, it has always been the board's intention to have year round residency, period. That's always our intention. And we came up with the idea of allowing the two months, you know, because of the logic that I described, that there are people who would be living there who could earn a little extra money by renting their unit for two months. But it's nothing new. This is always, this has had continuity since the very beginning. What we don't want to have is some inclusionary aspects to this bylaw and then the rest of the market units being built that are investment properties that nobody's there. We absolutely do not want that.
I totally get that.
Yeah.
Right now, until seasonal communities is clarified and we know that we can do year round restrictions, there is no mechanism in the law that allows us to do a year round restriction that's not tied to affordability.
I think we did have some, we did have some language from previous.
The prior town council had said in writing.
We had language in there.
Yeah, okay, one at a time.
On pages four and five, you have the definition of qualified household. And then you go to page five, which has year round ownership.
Right.
Units and year round rental.
Right.
Units. That's where we talked about no short term rental.
No short term rental.
That's the only place we talked about it.
That's correct, yep.
But then we decided to extend that throughout the district.
Yeah, but those.
That applies to, these definitions apply to the district.
These apply to all units.
And in, in, in the district and only in the district.
If we, if we, and, and I'm, I'm just going to suggest this.
Yeah.
If we, for now, don't allow the short term rental for two months.
Right.
These, the, these homeowners or renters are getting a better house, they're getting an affordable housing.
Right.
It's, we're, we're helping them. And if we don't do this other thing, we're probably not going to have anybody building anything. So, or they'll be living there by themselves. The two, two units out of 10 that will be occupied. So I'm suggesting that we go back, if we can, go back to some of the wording that we have here and, and not worry about allowing people a two month rental for now. And I, I think that's complicating this immensely. It's just go back to year, year round ownership and no short term rentals.
So put those two definitions back in.
Yeah, the problem is that current town council is telling us we can't do that.
No, they, where does he say that?
No, I don't think so.
No, Gloria just said that we can't put year round restrictions.
That was something different.
I think it's the qualified households that he was having an issue with. If we take qualified households out, which I always kind of wondered myself that, why that was in there, but if we leave year round ownership units and year round rental unit definitions in there.
For all units, all.
That is for all units.
So every unit in West Chatham is going to have to meet this year round ownership requirement. I, so I.
Ownership or occupancy.
I think that there's a really great chance that the AGO's, the AG's office will strike that down, unless that's clarified by seasonal communities.
And he, the AG's office may very well strike those two definitions. They won't strike the whole language, the whole bylaw, but they, you know, they have the ability to strike certain definitions if they deem it, it's not constitutional lawful or what have you.
So, board members, is this the direction we would like to go in? Put these two definitions back in and then strike the other provision where there would be the, the 10 months and, and two months?
Yeah.
Is that agreed?
Certainly, that's where I come out.
Okay.
Clarifying, so the, the latest definition then of affordable housing and attainable housing, we're taking out that 10 months out of 12 month period?
You should still leave it in that.
I think you should.
Yeah, I think we could leave there.
Because that, I think, is the only place that that language actually shows up.
Okay, so that's, that's where you would allow it, is what you're saying?
Well, that's the only, those are the only two places where it is provided.
Yeah.
Under the definition of year round, a year round ownership may not be used as a short term rental subject to, and it defines that there.
Okay.
So, and then are we?
I'm not sure if the AG's office is going to buy this, in all honesty. But if, if it's a comfort thing and, and the board's comfortable leaving those in, leave them in.
Okay.
And let the AG decide if it can't be in there.
All right, so let me.
But then somewhere in the body of this bylaw, you have to have something about the creation of year round ownership or rental units. Because right now, those two sections and the qualified household, they're its own little bubble. Like, the only time those terms are referred to are among those three definitions. Like, there's absolutely nothing in the bylaw itself that talks about the creation of year round units.
Well, am I misunderstanding or is it just?
And also, the way this is written, when it just says may not be used as a short term rental, that it still isn't, you'd still have to limit it to a maximum number of rental days or something because all that means is that they can rent it, like, every month for the whole year. It just means they can't rent it, you know, for 30 days or less.
I believe what the board is asking is that all units, that we add language that indicates that all units are for year round occupancy, either owned or rented.
I think that's illegal.
I agree. I don't think you can do that. I mean, that would be like me buying a market rate unit and only using it myself two months out of the year.
Yeah, and Pat's, Pat's.
No, year round. That's not, that's not what I'm saying. We're saying year round residency.
Pat's take on that was, first, in my opinion, a little, a little bit dubious. But if you recall, the way he, the way he enabled that was he said, well, if you do it under a special permit, then you can require a year round restriction.
He did say that.
So I disagree with that anyway, especially in light of the Affordable Homes Act and what it's saying. Like, that, that description that he came up with is inconsistent with what I'm seeing in the law now. So if you want year round occupancy units, we have to not just put it in a definition, which means nothing. All you're doing is defining it. You have to put it in the bylaw. You have to say when you want them, you want to say how you want them. You have to put a special permit process on it or something like that. And I just don't think, given the Affordable Homes Act and the seasonal communities, that this is legal.
So, but we're not discussing affordable, this is completely outside of affordable. This is for all units, this is for market rate units. So, but just hang on a bit. So that would be our intention. We, we've discussed this at length, I mean, for years, that, that we want that. If there's no legal way to do that, what we have to face is that we have the potential of many market rate units being built that are not occupied year round.
Yep.
And a few affordable, attainable, that will be occupied year round. And then we have to ask ourselves, is this really what we want in West Chatham? I think the answer is no. We want a year round neighborhood center. So we don't want that.
Opportunity is next year or the year after, after we get guidance about the seasonal communities section of the Affordable Homes Act, which allows for seasonal communities to do year round restrictions, then you can go back and put it in. Right now, we can't. Like, as a professional, I'm telling you that it's not, I, I get what you want. We all want that. Like, it would be ideal if, like, I walked down the streets of Provincetown walking my dog and I actually saw someone. You know, it would be fantastic if we all lived in year round communities on the Cape. But this bylaw is not the place to do it right now. Maybe in a year.
Exactly the place to do it.
But not, but not now, not now. I'm telling you, you can't, you can't just say every unit that's created has to be year round. I mean, you can try to do it with a special permit process, but if you were able to do that, they wouldn't have had to pass a law in the Affordable Homes Act specifically for seasonal communities to enable us to do that. So at the state level, they're working down this kind of enabling legislation for us to do that, but we're not there yet. So therefore, this is not, what's that, what's that term? Is that like not ripe or something like that? You, you, we're just, it's not, it's just not time for that.
So let's just put in the restriction on short term rentals.
I agree. We know we can do that.
Yes, we can. So I would agree with you. I am, I am not interested in bumping this for seasonal requirements that are months or years out.
Yeah.
That, that leaves us hanging here way too long. So let's do what we can do at this point. I agree with what, what Frank had just suggested.
So short term rentals for no more than 65 days a year? Or 62 or something like that?
Sure.
No, no.
No short term rentals.
No short term.
No short term rentals.
But if you don't, so I, so.
So they rent it out for six months of the year.
I would rather define and regulate short term rentals and put a cap because if you say no short term rentals, all that means is that someone can rent their place continuously for 31 day chunks.
Fine.
That's okay.
But that's even, but that's even more rentals than 65 days out of the year.
No, it isn't.
No.
No, because it's up to.
It is, it is.
Why, why? I don't follow your math.
So if you, if you say no short term rentals, all that means is if you want to rent your place, you have to rent it for 31 days or more.
Right.
That's right.
So you can rent it for June to, June 1st to July 2nd, July 2nd to August 4th, August 4th to whatever, and on and on and on every 31 days if they want it to.
No, only, only, only two months out of every calendar year.
No, we got rid of that.
We got rid of that, yeah.
But that.
We did?
Yeah.
But you, so you can't, you can restrict short term rentals.
I'm not sure that's right.
To like a cap, that's what I'm saying. Allow them, but put a cap on the number of days in a year that you allow them.
Mr. Chair.
That's better than banning them.
No, we got rid of them all together and we, we, if somebody rents it for 30 days and then 30 days and 30 days, 31, 31, 31, and then there's nine months left and they, they're not, they'll rent it for the winter for nine months. That's fine. I, I, I just, I think that's very different than, you know, having somebody in there for two days and somebody else for three and then.
I thought the proposal was you can rent up to 60 days in a calendar year. Full, full stop.
No, Frank, we, we decided that.
Where, where do we get rid of that, though?
Where did we get rid of it? I don't think we did.
We did get rid of it except for the affordable and attainable. We did.
No, there's two issues here. One is short term rentals and the other is long term, you know, year round.
Occupancy, yeah. Occupancy, yeah.
They're two different things. We were told that we cannot do year-round restrictions, but we can restrict short-term rentals. So we could ban them completely. But instead, we're going to allow them up to 60 days, but it has to be 30 days apiece. I thought that's where we were.
No, because I asked Catherine and I said, that's, that's creating the problem. Let's just get rid of that for everyone and just ban short-term rentals. Period. It's much cleaner.
Well, I can do that, too.
That, that.
But, but I still, I still think that if, if you say up to 60 days, all right, that means for 10 months of the year, there's somebody living there.
Or not living there. Maybe they're in Singapore.
Or, or it's vacant, which is not economic. No one, not too many people are going to have a house that sits vacant for, for 10 months.
Yeah.
And, and, and the, and the low, the affordable person can rent it out for 31 days for two months in the, in the summer. That, that they can, that, I mean, my friends that move into their garages rent the thing to one person for the whole summer. That, that's, that's how they make their money. So. I, I, I think, I, I just think it's, at this point, given that we have to finish this tonight, given that we don't, the one thing we know we can do is ban short-term rentals.
Let's do that.
Very good.
Let's do that.
Charlene?
Does the state define short-term rental?
Yes.
So in the, I'm going to suggest in the use table, you put short-term rental and in perens pursuant to the CMR or what have you.
Yeah, there's a couple of things. It's in the tax code and.
And then just put.
It's been a while.
X across the way, but then you need to, let me finish.
Yeah, I'll let you finish.
I'm not sure how easier that can get than this. For the attainable and affordable units, would there be an exemption there?
No.
No, there wouldn't. So that, I've answered my own question.
Because they're de-restricted, so it has to be their principal residence.
Right.
Gloria, I don't, I actually read the state rules on short-term rentals, that reference at one point, and I've forgotten completely what it said, but I know it was a couple of pages. Can, can you just summarize what that says?
So there's, there's a couple of references in short-term rentals. And it's, it's actually really, it's fuzzy in a way. When I, when I testified at the State House on the ADU regulations, that was like one of the things I brought up. So, the short-term rentals is part of the tax code. It doesn't define the length of short-term. It's elsewhere in the CMRs that it talks about 31 days. But there's also a reference somewhere for like short-term being 90 days. But generally, people go for the 31. But I will pull out those citations because I have them from my testimony, so I'll be able to get it really quickly.
And I believe there's all, there are exceptions as, as well in.
So two weeks, any, anyone can rent for two weeks and you don't have to register with the state DOR. You, like, anybody can do a two-week short-term rental and it's completely off the books and you don't pay taxes on it or anything.
Yeah, short-term is less than 31 days.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
No reference to a state law.
Okay, so let me.
And we need a definition for this of short-term.
Exactly. So if you want it specific to this bylaw and this zoning district, we can put it in the definitions. If you're okay with referencing the actual law, we can just put it in the use table.
I am not.
Okay, let me, let me see if I can summarize here. The, the affordable housing and the attainable housing definitions stay as they, as they are with a reference that 10 months out of 12-month period of time.
Yep.
That all stays. Is that, is that agreed, right? The, now the definitions for year-round ownership units and the year-round rental units, we're, we are removing them. Is that correct? Yep.
As well as qualified household.
And, and a qualified household. So we're removing that. You're going to add what we're defining as short-term rentals in, as a definition?
Yep.
And, and then we are going to note this in the use table then. I think that's the cleanest way to go. That's, what I've been hearing is a suggestion. I think, can we clean that up for, right? We have a day or two to clean before we refer this, and that's about all we have. Okay?
Yeah.
Please clarify, what does that mean? You can rent short-term? How long, how often?
Well, we're.
We're banning short-term rentals.
We're banning.
So nobody can rent their place for less than 31 days.
31 days.
And can they rent it 10 times a year for 31 days?
Yeah, they sure can.
This is just totally against anything the board has indicated it wants.
But I think Gloria's indicating it's the best we can do right now.
Until the seasonal.
No, so.
No, I don't think Gloria said that. I don't think.
Oh, actually Gloria's saying.
I would do it differently. I would allow short-term rentals and I would cap the total number of days at 60. That's, that's how I would do it. It's more complicated.
I would agree with that.
I can agree to that, but I would also make the observation that if.
We're already like redlined and marked it off and said everything.
If, if there's any possibility that a large number of units will be built and be able to be rented out.
Whoa, 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 too many conversations. One at a time.
If there's any chance that a large number of units can be put in by a developer and rented out, you know, short-term, I'll use the term, the chances are slim and none, actually, I'll say none, that the voters of this town would approve this bylaw. It won't happen. It's been consistent right from the beginning that that's the last thing that they want to have happen. There are plenty of short-term rental units available in Chatham. There's no shortage. What we're trying to do is make sure we don't increase the supply. So as long as whatever we come up with and put forward says no, I'm in favor.
I want to go down the line in here. Bob, next.
You putting on the, a limit on the short-term rentals for two months does nothing to prevent somebody from then renting that same place for a, for a month and a half and a month and a half? Because you've only limited the short-term rental. So, the way, so, so why not restrict the short-term rental?
It's what you guys said. I, I literally was like writing notes as you were all agreeing to ban short-term rentals and put Xs in the use table. That's why I did it.
That's what you did say.
Right, but then you said you would prefer.
I, no, all I said was, if I were doing this.
Yes.
That's the way I would approach it because you would have 10 months out of the year where you could not rent it.
No, no, I totally disagree with you.
Okay, I know. That's why we're not doing it that way.
No, because your, your definition does not restrict a long, long-term rental. Your, your restriction just allows, in addition to the long-term rentals, two months of short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think it's simpler just to, from, from everybody's perspective, get rid of the short-term rental because that's what everybody's going to object to.
It's definitely the easiest. I don't think that it's going to have the ultimate effect that you are after. But, but that said, I mean, it's really digestible. So when, when people at town meetings see this, they're going to see, oh, short-term rentals, X, X, X.
Exactly. That's why we're doing it. That's why we're doing it.
Next, Charlene, any further comments?
Nope.
Okay, Frank?
I.
Let's not confuse this now.
I'm not going to. I, I, I just want to support Gloria's position. And I, I think limiting short-term rentals to 60 days or rentals to 60 days a year.
I, I think we're going to complicate this to the point where we're not going to move ahead. I think we have to go the direction that has been suggested by, by Bob and Charlene and, and Warren. That's, that's, I think, where we have to go on this. I, I don't have time to flush this out any further than that. Right? And if, if that is the direction of the board, I'm fine with it. Then we're not moving ahead with it this year, and that's going to make life a lot simpler for me. I'm not, I'm not objecting to push, pushing this through as we have it right now. I think it's a good bylaw. I'd like to get over this hiccup. That's all.
So we just, we would just, we, we would, your proposal is that we just have no short-term rentals at all.
Correct.
All right, good.
As a not permitted use, not permitted.
Let me ask the dumb question again. So no short-term rental?
Correct.
But the guy that owns that year-round rental can rent it anytime he wants?
Correct. It's just it has to be more than 31 days.
For any period longer than 30 days.
See, that's where the, that's where the gray area comes in.
So I buy it and I rent it for the whole year?
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Or you could do that.
Yeah.
Or you could rent it to one person for the summer and another person for the winter.
Which is commonly done, which is very often done, and they charge something higher in the summer.
We, we have been. Yeah, that's right.
Five years, seven years, let's, we're down to this clip right here.
Yeah.
Let's get the paperclip done.
So I think, can I make, I think we're agreed, this is the best we can do for now.
Yes.
It doesn't, it does not address the idea of year-round occupancy, which Gloria is telling us that legally we cannot do at this time. I just want to make a comment, just for the sake of facing reality. There are many, many houses in Chatham, actually, the majority of houses in Chatham, which are now non-resident-owned. In other words, they are empty except for maybe two weeks a year when the owners come from New York or Singapore and enjoy their second home. So that's the thing, I think, that we didn't want to have happen in West Chatham, because there's plenty of that. I mean, and if you look at the data, you know, over the last couple of decades, the, the change in the percentage has been astronomical, changing from year-round, from homes that are occupied year-round to homes that are occupied like a weekend a year or a couple of weeks a year. And that's what we wanted to avoid. So if we can find a legal way to, to address that, I think we'd look forward to hearing that.
I want to thank the board for at least coming to a closure, at least on this. I do have one other thing for Gloria, though, before she leaves, and it has to do, and I think there's two references to this by Town Council. And the one that he makes a statement on is in Section 7, where he, on page 6, Section 7, where he, where he highlights the 20%. And I think, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, five footnotes down, it says JT.
Oh, the Emerson test?
Yes, correct. My point is that a property owner may challenge. This may not pass what we call the Emerson test.
It would have been fabulous if we had an explanation of what the Emerson test was.
My point, okay.
This is, yeah, this is new. Yeah, this is new to me. This is about the 20%.
The only, the only thing I can say is that there are a number of towns in the Commonwealth that have mandatory inclusion of affordable housing that's over 10%. Up to 20%. There are towns that have 20%. You know, I just, and so maybe there is an Emerson test and, you know, maybe we'll get tested in Chatham, whereas other communities that have 20% aren't getting tested. I, I don't have control over that, but all I can say is like the, yeah, the number of communities that do that is, is growing.
And I, I think, when we discussed this before, I agree with you. His original comment on this is on page 1 under G, where he said, "The Attorney General will generally approve inclusionary zoning, but justify an amount more than 10% is somewhat vulnerable to challenge."
Province towns.
I'm not quite sure that that's the case.
Province towns' inclusionary bylaw is a decade old and we did 16.7% and it was approved.
So I would say we'll need to, if, this always was our intent on this and we need to go forward with this, let Attorney General say yes or no to that.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Good.
Okay.
Really good.
All right, we're not done yet, folks.
But I'm done. I had to go.
Gloria, we're finished with Gloria, though, I think.
I know, I was coming to the meeting tonight, so I was already 12:30, so.
Do, because I, we need to vote this evening to send this to Town Council, to.
Just to refer it to the, to the select board. That's all, that's all we're doing. There's still opportunities to do other things. We're going to have a public hearing on it. We can make another adjustment if we hear something at the public hearing on it. But each, each one is going to be a short, short timeline. It's not major overhaul.
Right. I would move that we refer this bylaw with the changes.
We've got a few more things to go over there.
Oh, do we?
Yeah. That's why I said we're not done yet. Not many.
We're adding the prohibition on short-term rentals in the use table as a prohibited use.
Right.
Oh, okay. That's a good idea.
What more do we have?
Well, this one is, again, another Town Council issue. Yeah, thank you, Gloria. There's two components in here where we drafted some flexibility with review of a pre-existing, and there was slight modifications. If you have 200 square footage, you can do this. If you have 1,000 square footage, you can do that. That's, that's where Town Council has made comments. So the, the two sections are, under page 3, Procedure, the entire second paragraph there.
So page 2, item 4.
Item 4, under Procedure, the entire second paragraph, and Section 13, where it says all zones. And that refers to 1,000 square feet and criteria.
So I'm going to put my previous Town Planner hat on from Harwich. Very similar language. It was done as an overlay district and it passed muster at the AG's office.
Yeah.
Having it, having something 200 square feet or less, being reviewed by staff. It's got a, an appeal procedure through the planning board. I, I don't, I don't understand the concern, quite honestly.
Okay, all right. Can you, Christine, at least read the comment that the.
Sure.
Town Council had on this, because he just raised this again with his latest set of comments.
So the last comment that we received from him today on this is that perhaps if administrative site plan review was unsatisfactory, you could allow them to apply for more formal site plan with the planning board. But rather than have a two-step, you, two-step process, basically, may just do it all through the planning board's site plan review.
So.
So taking staff out of it.
Take a staff out of it was probably the cleanest way to do it.
I would just take the whole paragraph out then. You don't need it.
I, and I, that was my conclusion on this, too, along with Section 13, because it's a similar thing where we're talking about 1,000 square feet. But here's the, here's the situation on this. If there is a change that they want to do on this, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use and it would not be before the planning board. It would go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's my understanding.
Only the site plan part of it would go before the planning board.
Correct, only the site plan part. But any type of dimensional or, or change, the setbacks and stuff like that would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I think the idea here was to have a stepped process.
Well, I agree with you.
To make it simpler for somebody if they want to do an addition. And this is almost exactly how we did the overlay district in West Harwich.
He was raising questions on both of these paragraphs.
I mean, it was done under a District of Critical Planning Concern. However, you know, we have the formula-based bylaw, so it's, I, I, I don't see a problem with this. But I would definitely defer to others.
You don't see a problem leaving it in?
I don't see a problem leaving it in or being approved by the AG.
You're saying that we don't really need it, that it might be simpler to leave it out?
Oh, no. If, if we are concerned with Town Council's comments, take it out. But then we're taking out this provision that I think the board liked the 200, 200 square feet and 1,000 square feet. We like both of those.
Is it possible, we, we have a list of things that we're going to come back at, perhaps next year, like the height issue. Is this one of those issues that we simply put on that list to come back next year? Because I am concerned that Town Council is concerned about it.
It's up to you tonight to make a decision on how you feel about the comment that he brought forward. You don't necessarily have to act upon it.
I'm not saying I disagree or don't agree.
So I think it is something you can, you can change anything.
Put it aside and do it with that other list we have going.
Yeah.
So you have to make a decision for this evening.
You would say that we'd have to strike the paragraph. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, for now.
Say that again, Frank. You would like to.
Well, we have a list of things we're going to come back at. One of them is the height. That's very clear to me. We're going to have to come back on, on the height, and there are others. So I would add that to the list. If this gets approved, we're going to come back and take a look at it and see what modifications, what tweaks we need to make. This sounds to me like a tweak.
Okay, so are you talking about in Section 4 and Section 13?
We take them out, yeah.
Take them both out is what your suggestion.
Yeah, but put them aside and look at putting them back in as a tweak, if, if, if you will. That's where I would go.
Well, he, his last comment that he has here under 13 is, is if, "It conflicts with the rights of a property owner to seek whatever they may like in terms of an alteration." You can do this as a guideline, but there are legal issues in here. And I think that's what it's referring to. They, they would have rights as a pre-existing use to actually go before, say, the ZBA and ask. ask for a special permit to do something different that doesn't comply with zoning.
And they could still do that?
Yeah.
Even with this bylaw?
Even with this?
In, in place.
We don't have town council here.
No.
And that's why I'm trying to just put this aside and deal with it next year.
So...
Well, okay, Catherine?
So I just want to be clear. So Frank, you're suggesting we strike both paragraphs?
Yes.
In both places in response to the hesitations of town council. Charlene has assured us that this same type of thing was approved by Attorney General in Harwich. I would just like to comment, I've always looked at this particular passage as being extremely optional. It was just added?
Yes.
At the suggestion of our previous town planner, Ryan Christianberry, for the convenience of the applicant.
Yeah.
And I think that's why we agreed to it. We thought in some cases it'll make it more convenient for the applicant, but it's sort of not that much more convenient. I think it's an optional thing, and I would agree with Frank that, that it's something we could come back to and consider later.
All right. Katie is actually on remote, and I'd like to, Katie, I think you wanted to speak to this point.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So, yes, I just wanted to point out that town council had said, you know, we could, we could just make it a site plan review. But again, I think that the board's option to strike it for the time being is also an option, and we can review it further, we can review it further down the road. So I just wanted to make sure that folks saw that he had suggested that site plan review in and of itself was an option rather than an administrative review and then site plan review as well.
Okay, so this is the, one of the last major things that we need to decide before we were going to go ahead with referral. So could I hear from each of the board members on which way they want to go on this? I'm, I'm open to either way. I think that these are good ideas, but if there's some gray area here, I could live without it. So Catherine?
I would go for striking both paragraphs, I think, just for the sake of simplicity and expediency, and it's something, and it, as I mentioned, I, I've looked at it as an optional route that we added for the convenience of the applicant, but I, I don't think it makes that much difference, to be honest, and I, I would go for striking both paragraphs for the sake of simplicity.
Okay, Warren?
I think I would try and utilize the expertise and experience of Charlene here. It's a real live example, and if she thinks it would pass muster, I'd be in favor of it. But I don't have a strong feeling that if it, if it disappeared, that it would do any damage to the, to the overall bylaw, so. But I'm in favor of going with it.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm, I gotta admit, I'm a little confused. I like the, the making it easier was a good intent. If the good intent is we will allow site plan review for these kinds of, of pre-existing non-conforming, then let's just say that, if that's allowed. No, okay.
Yeah.
So then I, I don't, I don't, I think either way works.
Okay. Charlene?
I'd go either way.
Okay, all right. Frank?
I agree with Kathleen.
Okay, and Bob?
I agree with Kathleen.
All right. For simplicity, I would concur. Let's delete the second paragraph on section four and delete section 13. Right?
Mr. Chairman?
You can't delete.
I just, I want to be clear that it's only the first paragraph?
Only the first paragraph.
Of section, of section 13, and then the bullets?
Okay.
That follow that.
Okay, you're right. My mistake, thank you.
If I, if I could, I think that the, that they were very well-intended.
Yes.
So I think we ought not to forget and come back to it.
Oh, we, we have a list already. I, I, okay, now before we move on to the referral, I just want Christine, who spent more time on it than I have, if there's other things that we should point out to the board members before we refer this.
The only other things would be in section seven. We did get the new map, and that is put in there. That does show the zones. We did switch to the 150 feet.
That's that one.
And it's in the, it's in the graphic on that one as well.
Is that section six?
Six.
Page five.
That's correct.
Page five.
That's, this is the new map.
Yep.
I have a question on the map.
Yes.
I'm sorry to have a question on the map, but if you take a look at the far right, there's a lot on the north side of Main Street, and it shows the blue going into, which would be zone A1, going into the lot behind it. Is that what we intend? Because zone A1 is defined as areas within 150 feet for lots with frontage. Zone A2 is...
That's correct. I think, I think you're right about that, but I think they, correct me if I'm wrong, Christine, I think that, I've seen this before. In our town center, we did have a site that came before us that had the dimension there, and it went into the adjacent property, which was not frontage.
CVS Market.
Yeah.
CVS Market.
Yeah.
And the market itself, the market, the market is partly in there.
Partly in there, so I think you, you can define it this way.
Okay.
We, we have several of those on the south...
On the south side too, I noticed that. That's why I jumped in.
Well, you may have to define the definition of zone A2 then, because zone, zone B is lots without frontage on Route 28.
Yeah.
And one of those lots is now half in zone A2.
Okay.
That's right, there are split lots.
Yeah, there's split lots, yeah.
That's not one of them. That's not one of them.
This, the, the first descriptor for zone A1?
The back of the lot goes into a different thing. That's, that's all over town.
Yeah, but, but I think Frank is right, because if you look at these sites on the west and the southwest.
Correct.
They do not have frontage on 28.
That's right.
And they're listed as zone A1, and they're not.
So which, which lots are you talking about that are, and that don't?
These here.
It's because of the 150-foot setback.
There's a second lot behind them.
And they don't have frontage on...
There are...
Yeah, I see.
They're all over town.
I, I, they've come before us this way, where there's two...
You have to make a decision?
Yeah.
When you're there.
That's correct.
I do believe there's a provision in the, towards the preamble, if you have a split lot, how you deal with that.
Right, yeah.
That's why there's...
I will speak to Katie on it tomorrow, and we will have GIS adjust it accordingly.
I just wanted to raise it, it was unclear to me.
Yeah.
And now that you, now that you pointed out, I think it is...
It's a good point.
It's a strong point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We had, we had at one time gone by lot lines with this.
We did, yeah.
And then you decided to do it by the footage, and this is what happens when you do it by the footage.
Well, you want to do it by the footage, yes.
And there are ways to get around that.
Yeah. Okay, we'll, we'll look at that as one last thing.
They should be done.
All right. Any, that, that rapid? I'm on, anything else? Christine?
We had no other comments from council on section eight. Section nine, we, we went over the bullets for that, which were bullets four and five. And we did find that they were in bullet four, and that item, it was in, it's in the use table. Gloria confirmed it. And then on bullet five, we were looking at...
I'm sorry, what page are we on?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So we're on page seven.
Page seven. Which bullet are we talking about, at the very end?
Three, four, the bottom bullet on that one is bullet four.
So it's starting with applicant, applicant may apply?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So I would say to you for that one, he had asked the comment, and so we do have that it is in the use table. We did find it, so I don't know if there will just be a note, like if there will just be in the use table here, if you want to do that, or if we just do it, it's not necessary because it is in the use table. And then on the following page, on item, on page eight, bullet number five, which is the top bullet, you had given additional clarification of what you wanted at the February 3rd meeting, and Gloria did put additional information in that on, on February 5th. So I wanted you to know that that one was addressed.
Okay.
We've handled the all zones, and we've handled the footnote, so I think we're good at this point.
Okay.
So what you will need to do before we leave tonight is you will ultimately need to refer the two bylaws. So one bylaw will be the actual bylaw, oh, two articles, I should say. One will be the bylaw, and then one will be the, the map with the revisions that were just discussed a few minutes ago.
Right. And those, and those are the only two articles that we're referring at this point.
Initially.
There were other, there were, there were other articles that we were considering, but those are not going to move forward at this point, just these two.
Can I just clarify, what exactly are we changing on the map?
You're, you're saying about the, the lot lines, the ones that are not part of, that are not actually abutting on Route 28. Katie is back on again.
Katie, you, you can clarify this?
Yes, it's a zoning map amendment to create the district.
No, I understand that. What, but it was just said that we're going to address changing the map. Again, I'm confused on what we're changing in.
Oh, I miss, I misspoke.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
We're not changing the map. Not that map, we're changing this map.
So we're not changing the map?
Right. The zoning map amendment will relate to the outline of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. The subzones will not, they're not technically zones, they're subzones for our working purposes as we define and review site plans. However, the zoning map amendment will simply be the outline of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning district.
Okay.
Great, okay, good.
All right.
Want me to wing it?
Yes, just so you know, we will do a cleanup on this so that we give a clean version to the, to the referral, okay? And you will all get the clean version too.
My first motion would be to refer the changes to the zoning map for the West Chatham Zones to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on the town meeting warrant.
Okay.
And to have it referred back to us for public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, but I think in response to what Katie said, we're just approving the boundaries of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center as a separate article to be introduced at annual town meeting, just the boundaries.
Just the boundary.
That's what we're approving, that's what we're sending.
Not, not this map. This is the map that goes into the bylaw itself.
Right.
All right.
I think that's kind of what I said, so...
Okay.
Well, it's not zones, it's one, the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning district boundaries.
And we need to change the title of this from West Chatham Zones to West Chatham Boundaries?
Boundary.
I was referring to the name of the map.
There is a separate article that we had prepared a long, a couple of years ago that had all of this defined, and that is the article that we'll be putting forward that with the...
I would say to you, if you look on page two of your bylaw, the map that is there shows the boundary, and that is, the boundary is, is going to be put on the zoning map for the...
And that would be what the separate article would be.
This other map is just something within the bylaw.
Within the bylaw.
And it's not the boundary.
But are we...
Then I withdraw, I would withdraw my motion.
Okay.
You need to withdraw your second.
I withdraw my second.
I move that we refer the West Chatham Descriptionary Boundary Bylaw to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the, on the town meeting warrant.
And I second that motion.
Okay, let's vote on this first, and then we can move on to the second part.
That's why I did it, two parts. I thought the first one was going to be easy.
So Catherine Hepburn?
I approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wershafter?
Bob Wershafter, approve.
Charlene Greenall?
Charlene Greenall, approve.
Frank Shear?
Approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
And Art Sprou, I approve. Okay.
For the purposes of the proposed West Chatham Neighborhood Center District Proposed Bylaw, I would move that we refer this bylaw to the Board of Selectmen, don't worry, I'm going to include the changes, for inclusion in the town meeting warrant with the proviso that we delete the second paragraph of section four procedure, that we delete on, for the purpose, on page nine, all zones, the very first paragraph.
Yep.
And that we include a definition for short-term rental, and that we include that use in the use table of this bylaw prohibited across the board.
Yep. Do I have a second?
You also need to delete, per Gloria's comments, qualified household...
Well, those are... It's already in here.
Those are already deleted.
So that's why...
Those were already deleted.
Okay, but it's supposed to be deleted those today?
I'll second it.
Okay. Yeah, it's...
Can I get, we're going to put this map that's on page three just as it, or five just as it is, and not, not make that?
No, we're going to put this map in there.
And then, and also include the new map in section three of the bylaw, subsection three of the bylaw.
Section six, subzones. We're going to include the new subzone map.
Okay, what's the map on page three then? This one?
No, no, this one.
Okay.
The map on page three is just the boundary map.
Okay, then on page six?
Okay.
Or section six?
Page five, section six.
Section six.
Yeah, okay.
Good luck, Annie.
All right. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Bob Dubus, I have a second, so let's take a vote on this. Catherine Hepburn?
I approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob, Bob Wershafter?
I approve.
Charlene Greenall?
I approve.
Frank Shear?
I approve.